Approval of the June 27th, regular commission meeting minutes.
I'm making a motion to approve it.
We have a motion and a second to approve the June 27th regular commission meeting minutes as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Deliverate an act on Center's Car Club Show, Car Show, Road Closures. Mr. Berry?
Mayor and Commission, this is a new event for Raton. Although we have had car shows in Raton in the past, this is really some, organized by some people that are expanding this, I think, to include other car clubs coming from some distance. And it could be a nice event, a big event for Raton. And it coincides with a motorcycle event. And this will take place from July 21st to July 23rd. That's a Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. They are proposing to close about three blocks of First Street to conduct the car show. There will be some music performances held during that time as well. There will be vendors. The organizers of this are really partnering with Main Street, who is very experienced at this event, this type of event. We have reviewed this with staff. As a matter of fact, we had a meeting today that included the organizers of the event, police, fire, emergency services, public works. So we think we have all the details worked out for it. It is a new event, so we're not sure, you know, what the turnout looks like. But our recommendation is to approve the event and the closure. As you have in the packet there, you see the certificate of liability and some of the details on the event. Some of the challenges that we look at is during this time, we're gonna have, this is an intermodal facility and we have bus traffic trying to get to the rail depot. That's, you know, Philmont related and then outside of Philmont. So there'll be notification given to those. And that access will be available on Rio Grande Avenue. It's something that we have dealt with in past events on First Street. So I think it's systematic getting that communication out to people. And I think we've got that handled okay. City crews will be involved as far as providing traffic control and monitoring the event. I would like to tell you, Mayor and Commission, that you have on your desk something that we worked on today. And that's related to the motorcycle event. It's called the Run for Raton. This is the first year for this event as well. And JP Rodman is the primary person. And if you know JP's story, he builds motorcycles in the old Chaminot Ford building and is quite talented at that. And is developing a big reputation for motorcycles that he constructs. So they've organized the Run to Raton. Originally, there was not a road closure involved in this. But the events are going to center around that Chaminot Ford building on Clark Avenue. We decided that it may be advisable to close half a block of that. I think the expectation is we could see a couple of hundred people at this event. And I think they'll use that as a base. And then the motorcycles will go out in the area and see different tours of the area over their couple of days of the event. So while we don't have this on the agenda, and I'm not asking you to vote on it, I would say that we plan on doing that. The certificate of insurance is coming in next week for that. We have planned for this event as well. And I think that between the two of them, we'll have a lot of activity in town. And since these are both new events to us, I'll answer any questions or attempt to answer any questions that you might have.
What street are you closing or opposing to close?
Well, for the motorcycle run, we're looking at closing that half a block of Clark Avenue that's in front of the old Chaminot Ford building. It's generally in the area of the Chris House. It's between the alley and, Second Street alley and Third Street. We're looking at closing that.
If we're not gonna vote on this tonight, is the same time though for the other event?
The same time. And our next meeting will be after the event is held. So I want to make you aware of it. We won't vote for the commission on that. And it's not on the agenda.
Right.
But I'll let you know that we're done or planning on that. And it wasn't on there because there wasn't a road closure planned. And, you know, an event that just brings people to town does not always go through the standard event protocol. But we decided that maybe prudent to go ahead and close that. And let you know that that is probably gonna happen.
Along the event on First Street, have the businesses delayed? Kosher would be enclosed basically for late?
Well, I want to say that yes, they are good with the blockage of that. One of the conditions that we had is that anybody that's involved in this be notified. And that would be businesses. There are residents that live on the second floor. Everyone get notification. And whatever their needs are, that's accommodated. And of course, this time of year, we have farmer market.
Right.
And so there's an accommodation for farmer market as well. So I think we're good on that. But we know that there's some communications and accommodations that need to be made.
And if I understood this correctly, the concessions are gonna be across the street on the multi-modal side, not in front of the businesses? Is that correct?
Well, I think that's correct.
Okay. Because that was one of the complaints.
Right. Then the farmer's market takes up in front of the businesses.
But you always have. And I assume you have the permission.
Right.
Yeah, there was the complaint that the vendors were blocking the businesses on First Street.
I see.
So that's why I asked that question. And the other question I have is, why do we have people mark whether they're for-profit or non-for-profit, for-profit? Is there a reason to that?
There really is not a reason for that. I mean, we treat people the same.
The same, yeah.
And generally, I think for this kind of thing, we're dealing with not-for-profit. There may be some for-profit enterprises that do something, say at the Shooter Theater. But we treat everyone the same whether they're profitable or not-for-profit. So there's not really a good reason for distinguishing.
Yeah, the only reason I, you know, if you are not, if you have that status with the federal government to have you attach it. But, you know, if they're really not a valid reason to even do it, I don't think that's necessary.
Yeah, it's not really something that we need to know. What we do occasionally ask is, you know, what's the benefit to the public? As far as how we handle fees on different city facilities? Is there a public benefit that you're claiming? Or is this not really intended for the public? And so a not-for-profit can charge fees from the use of city facilities. And then they in turn would pay the fees, whether they're profit or not-for-profit. So that's the criteria we're really looking for.
I talked to Joseph Rodman about it and to the people from the past, Old Pass. And they're actually gonna build a car from the brain up in the three days they're having a competition of doing that. They'll be having that strike that if you go by the, what they call now the JP Rodman Building, not the Chaminot Building anymore. And if you go by that, they have that strike out there. And they're gonna be halfway mad off from the thing. And it's, I think it's very important that we allow this to happen when we're asked. I'll make a motion to approve the Center's Car Club Show and Road Closures to include the motorcycle rally.
The car rally is always there. We need the motorcycle. Oh. Just the car rally?
To include the road closures for the bike rally. We can't do that.
Would you restate your motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve this Car Center Club Show Road Closures.
We have a motion and a second to approve the road closures for the Center's Car Club Car Show. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. North of I-25, Neighborhood Watch Update Slideshow. Is there someone here for that?
Mayor and Commission, the Neighborhood Watch has asked to postpone their presentation to the commission. We'll probably have them here at the next meeting. But they were, didn't get everything together timely to attend tonight. So we'll push that back to the next meeting.
I'll make a motion to postpone the I-25 Neighborhood Watch Update Slideshow. We have a motion and a second to postpone the Neighborhood Watch Update Slideshow. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Deliverate an act on Resolution 2017-33, Raton City Emergency Operations Plan.
Mayor and Commission, the nature of our emergency services are your own call all the time. So we've got some action going now. But we do have Chief Matthews stand by. And he has prepared the Emergency Operations Plan for City of Raton. You can see it's a quite lengthy document. This would be available for review of the commission or anybody that would like to see that by contacting myself or Chief Matthews. Chief Matthews is on hand here to walk you through the elements of the plan and what it all means and what we're gonna do with that. So I'll turn it over to Chief Matthews.
Thank you, sir. A few months ago, we had a power outage. And a lot of citizens were concerned that the city did not have an emergency plan in place. While all the departments knew what their actions were to be and had individual SOPs on what to do, where to open shelter agreements were all made. It wasn't all combined in one central case. Over the last couple of months, a group of people put this plan together. It is basically any emergency-type plan. Whether it be flood, a fire, a power outage, a winter storm, this plan should work. It also addresses every department and also state, county, schools. They're all in here and it shows their role in. If you should go through it and look, it is in color. In the very back, there is one page that shows each department with a little arrow through it. That is so the departments can thumb through here. And for example, Police Department is blue. If they come through here and they find a blue arrow somewhere, like right there, they know that that section affects them, what their role would be in that type of emergency. Right now, I have a copy of it. City manager has a copy. Our clerk has a copy. And there's one more copy up front. Once approved, we will put it online. And it will not be static. It's dynamic and it's always gonna be growing. As people look through it, as each department head, stockholder looks through it, they make suggestions, we'll adjust it. At least once a year, this should be updated. Presented to you for your approval. And we'll get that. And it's therefore, not just us, but all the citizens of the...
And Mayor and Commission, I think as we've talked about in various things that have happened during the past year or two, communications is essential. And so I think that we would try to communicate with a lot of parties to the emergency plan and try to communicate where everyone fits in. So there is training and lots of steps that will take place. Not a plan that you want to put on the shelf and when the emergency happens, pull it down and find out what's going on. We need some preparedness prior to that. So we'll be working on that. I take a community meeting also. We'll be in line or we'll invite the public to come and talk about that. And I think we'll hear concerns from the public. And we'll talk about how we address different things and provide information to them. And so there are a lot of steps to take once we approve the plan. It's not the last time we'll hear about it.
Very good. So it sounds like you've kind of taken the emergency plans from each department and then merged them together.
Each department spoke with a few other cities and got some ideas on how they organized it and everything. And put it all together in one location.
I like that it's a working, living document that we're, you know, working on.
Was there any conversation with the county and their ability to multicast out messages?
Actually, specifically on that, yes. We've talked about their reverse 911 system that they have, where they have certain materials staged primarily. Cots, volunteers, staffing and stuff for shelters. Yes, we have come to them and they are addressed in here also.
Great.
I'll move that we approve Resolution 2017-33, Raton City Emergency Operations Plan.
My only problem is I'd like to read it before I approve it.
Sure.
And Mayor and Commission, that's absolutely, there's not a hurry on that. If you would like to delay your adoption, it is available. And we can do that a couple of ways. We can give you a scanned copy of this or you can take this copy with you. And we can convene again in two weeks and consider the resolution. So there's certainly not any pressure to adopt the resolution tonight.
Yeah, I made the motion simply because it's a living document that they're willing to work on as they get feedback. So that's why I was comfortable making that motion tonight. But I can rescind it if that's the consensus.
I have the most confidence that they worked on it and I'm blessed at it. And I believe that it's appropriate. Because you can rid it and find any kind of changes or something that affects you and bring it back to the city manager.
Should we have to then really approve it, approve any changes? How does that work?
No, I think like Chief had said, this is not a vote that is required by a state or a federal level mandate. This is simply the city of Raton establishing that we are responding to some of the things that we've talked about through the year. We're documenting that. We're implementing the plan. There are gonna be revisions to it as we go. We would like your concurrence and your endorsement of that. But certainly, you have all the time that you need to do that. So however you want to do it from this point, it certainly works. It's not an outside mandate that we pass this on a certain date.
No. And I'm making an assumption, but I know we had an operating plan before. So I assume that that's still in existence.
I haven't really seen an emergency operations plan. We've had city plans before, growth and planning and stuff like that. But not for emergency.
I think we talked about it right after the fire, but nothing was really official.
Now, this plan, besides just, we will open a shelter. It says where the primary shelter is, where's the backup, where's the third one? Who do we call? Who do we call for volunteers? Their names, their phone numbers. And that stuff is gonna change all the time. So this book is gonna have to change all the time.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2017-33, Raton City Emergency Operations Plan. And we have a roll call vote.
Missioner Travis?
Yes.
Missioner Docable?
Yes.
Missioner Schuster?
Yes.
Mayor Protonstevad?
Yes.
Mayor Mitz?
Motion passes.
Thanks for the question. Do you all see me again about this thing, sir?
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, I can have that.
We'll put it on a flash drive then for you.
Deliverate an act on...
I'm sorry, would anyone else like a flash drive?
Yeah.
Deliverate an act on an agreement between the City of Raton and Raton Firefighters Local 2378.
Yeah, Mayor and Commission, and this is the local of the International Association of Firefighters. You have the agreements in front of you. We anticipated a July 1st implementation date, but there were some mechanical issues here that we had to come to the meeting tonight. So you see the effective date. The commission votes in favor of the agreement. It starts at 8:00 tomorrow morning. And it's intended to be a two-year term. We are cutting 12 days off of that term. But we do have some members of the local present tonight that have put in a lot of work on the agreements. You have my strong endorsement of the agreement. I'm available to answer any questions that you have. But I would give you a very enthusiastic recommendation to vote in favor of the agreement.
Any questions?
Questions? I'd like to make a motion to approve the agreement between the City of Raton and the Raton Firefighters Local 2378.
Second. We have a motion and a second to accept the agreement between the City of Raton and the Raton Firefighters Union, I mean, not union, local 2378. Roll call vote, please.
Missioner Schuster?
Yes.
Missioner Docable?
Yes.
Missioner Travis?
Yes.
Mayor Protonstevad?
Yes.
Mayor Mitz?
Yes. Motion passes. Deliverate an act on an introduction of an ordinance, number 995, Changes to the City of Raton Animal Ordinance, Section 9, Chapter 90.
Mayor and Commission, if you remember sometime back, a few months ago, we had assembled a committee to evaluate proposals to the animal control ordinance. The committee has met a number of times and done their work, I believe. And so you have a draft of the ordinance in front of you for introduction tonight. Obviously, we will, going forward, the action would be to set up a public hearing that subsequently, and the public would be notified of that by the methods described in the ordinance. And it will come back at some later time, have a public hearing. And the commission consider final action on the ordinance. So this would be the introduction. And there are some changes in the ordinance that the committee is recommending to you that will be significant changes from how we do things currently. And so one of the committee members is Mrs. Fernandez. She is on hand. And Leslie, if you could kind of go over those with us? Or I could try to do those. But Leslie's very familiar with the elements in the ordinance. And Mrs. Fernandez?
Thank you, Mr. Berry. Mayor and commissioners, you kind of know from seeing my face a couple of times that this is the culmination and presentation of something that started about two and a half years ago. The last animal ordinance was written, I believe, in 1984 by Mr. Robert Skinner, the city attorney at that time. And I think it was three pages, something like that. The Raton Humane Society and members thereof started looking at it and realized that that was a long time ago and things needed to be changed, brought up to date, become more encompassing. And so we took on the task of, about six members, put together a draft ordinance. We brought that before you. And then, as Mr. Berry said, a subcommittee was put together. That committee has gone back and forth a couple of times. And this is the final product. I will tell the commission that what we see from the... I'm representing the Humane Society, but I also wrote the ordinance. So I think I know it pretty well. And I think I know the Humane Society's position pretty well. And I also know some of the more controversial changes. And I think you may as well know them right now so that in the upcoming days, when people may have read the ordinance and are looking at it, you'll be prepared. One of the changes is regarding livestock inside the city limits. Right now, the way it reads, it's all based on neighbor agreement. Within 500 feet, if you get your neighbor's agreement on having horses or cows or anything else, you can house those animals inside the city limits regardless of zoning. The change here is fairly drastic because it says no large livestock. And large livestock is defined in the ordinance as opposed to small livestock. No large livestock in the city limits except as allowed by current zoning. And that, basically, Mr. Berry pulled out a city map for the subcommittee and showed us that currently zoning only allows those large livestock animals in kind of the peripheral, give me the number, Mr. Berry.
R1.
R1s that are far less dense.
On the boundary of Raton.
And there's four or five of them, I think. And I will tell you that the committee members were all pretty sure that there's lots of other people that have horses outside the R1 but inside the city limits. So that's gonna be, that's going to affect them fairly greatly. The small livestock is also defined, but I think primarily, we think chickens. And we allowed up to five, total of up to five small livestock and no roosters. And as a person who lives in the county right next door to a rooster, it's not a cock-a-doodle-doo in the morning. It's pretty much all day. And so again, the subcommittee decided that inside the city limits, chickens, again, kind of moving forward and being progressive about the sustainability concept that we're all trying to do with the Center for Sustainability and just getting things a little bit more organic. The chickens would be fine, not the rooster. That's one major change. The two other changes deal almost exclusively with dogs and cats. The first one is mandatory spay neuter of any animal over the age of four months unless you get from the city what's called in the ordinance, a hobby breeder permit. That, I believe, is $350 a year. You have to renew it each year. And there are requirements on you if you have a litter under the hobby breeder. First of all, your animal has to be registered and you have to show the city proof of registration. First of all, your animal has to be registered, and you have to show the city proof of registration with a reputable animal group, like the American Kennel Club or the American Pit Bull Breeders Club, the reputable groups around the nation that go toward keeping a breed pure. You have to have that, and then there are things after you have the litter. You have to have your hobby breeder permit number on any puppies that are sold, and that sort of thing. I will tell the council that that was controversial, and one of the subcommittee members said, you know, I have a friend who has a dog that's not registered, and, you know, she sells him for quite a bit of money, and she makes money off of that. And I don't think it's right to make her get a... Well, she can't get a hobby breeder permit because it's not a registered animal. And I think that member thought about... I just heard Mr. Berry talking about the greater public good, and I think that member started thinking about it in the next days, about the greater public good as opposed to, wow, my friend has a dog that she wants to breed. And realized and came back to the committee and said, no, I'm in favor of it. I'm fully endorse the efforts, and I agree with how it's written. So we backed off. When she opposed it, we were going to put a reputable breed organization or other, or something, or take that out, but we backed off, and that's how it is now. So I will tell the commission that in four years of volunteering for the Humane Society and working hand in hand with Barbara Bonahom at the shelter, I guarantee you that if you ask John Taft, who has been your animal control officer for 30-some years, what one provision he agrees with the most in this, it's the mandatory spay neuter, because the tragedies and the numbers that we see at the shelter are just unbelievable. And Taft has been telling me since I was in the DA's office, can't you do something about the mandatory spay neuter? And I always said, no, 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 and finally, I'm able to tell him, yes, yes, yes. So I hope he'll come. He's having some medical issues with his wife, that he's not here all the time, but I hope he's here next month when you discuss it, so that you can confirm that with him, because I guarantee you, for 10 years, he's been telling me that he thinks that would be the one change in the ordinance that would have an effect, a positive effect. The third, and probably the most controversial, change is an effort to kind of catch up with a lot of communities in New Mexico and ban tethering or chaining, and particularly ban single-point tethering. And again, the subcommittee talked about presenting to you an alternative or an option called trolley, a trolley system, where there's a line that has to be a particular kind of rubberized cable or rubber-covered cable, has to be 12 feet long, has to be at least four feet off the ground, and the dog can be tethered to that, but yet have the ability to move those 12 feet. But then there are also requirements for shade, housing, the food and water, of course, that sort of thing. A lot of communities use that, and a lot of communities use it with a time schedule, like you can have them out one hour out of four hours, or six hours out of a 24-hour period. The subcommittee, and I think I told the commission before, that's untenable to enforce. You just can't do it. With one animal control officer, you cannot enforce something that has, and even with the police department, that has timing. So the questions were, do we propose to the commission a trolley system as an alternative, a no-chaining recommendation, or forget about it, let's just stay back with 1984 and allow people to do that? Again, this final proposal to, or this working proposal at least, the proposal introduced today, based on the subcommittee, and I was not the only member of the subcommittee. I may have been the most vocal, but I was not the only one, came down to the resolution after several months of talking about it and thinking about it, that we want the no-chaining and with a provision and the understanding that the city animal control is not going to go out and cite everybody that has a chained dog. We want this to be an educational ordinance to explain to them why it's better not to have a dog chained and what they would have to do by building a fence. We also want the Humane Society to be an integral part of helping people who can't afford a fence or can't make a fence, are unable to do the physical labor. We hope that the Humane Society and some of our volunteers are able to help out in that. So what we anticipate is not to have John Taft go out and cite everybody, but that if the city gets a call, which I guarantee you they do, from a neighbor who says, I can't stand it any longer, this dog is on a two-foot chain, the chain weighs 30 pounds, they don't have any water, they don't have any shade, can you do something? John Taft has had to say, always, sorry, I can't. Now, this ordinance allows him to go out and say, you know, sir, if you could just lighten, you know, lighten the load a little bit, make the fence, do this, do that. For 90 days or 60 days, they would have the opportunity to come into compliance with the ordinance before ever being cited. So that's how we envision it, and that's how we're proposing it. I would say that those are the three major changes. Everything else, there's some really long verbiage, both about vicious animals and about sterilization, mandatory sterilization. That comes directly from the state statute, which has been in effect for about 12 years. It was just never incorporated into the city ordinance. So it... The whole section, and I think it's probably three or four pages, on vicious animals mirrors exactly the state statute. And it changes things a little bit, but it gives a lot more guidance to Judge Manfredi about what he should do if a dog bites someone or if a dog mauls another dog. And so I think it's just far more clear than the last ordinance, and anything with clarity helps not only the police officers, the animal control, and also the citizens, and Judge Manfredi.
And Mayor, I would say that the committee discussed in length a lot of these issues, a lot of back and forth. We... And the committee is in concurrence with the changes described by Mrs. Fernandez and the ordinance that you have in front of you. And I think the thing that we saw is that with the tethering, it sounds good, but I don't know that you could ever take a case to municipal court or another court. It's just not something that you could go with the proper level of evidence on. And if you can't take a case to court, then that provision of the ordinance is not worth the paper that it's written on. And so I think we agreed that this is something that is a change, and, you know, people are going to say, I don't like change. And we're really trying to evolve over a period of some time. And so there's a grace period here, and there's an educational component, and we're really looking at some years down the road where we can modify the behavior of pet owners, basically, that would have kind of come around to this. And that's... I think that's the intent, really, is that, yes, we're going to have some debate on this, but we're looking long-term down the road at really getting there.
I'd like to thank all the people that worked on this very hard. I think it's a well-written and a very good document. I just don't think it addresses cats enough.
I'll tell you, Mayor. In now dealing with the shelter, the four and a half years as I have, I think feral cats is probably, or are probably, the larger problem, and even tougher to deal with than... They may not be as understandable and arguable as some of these things, but we, and I know the animal control officer, get more calls on feral cats than just about anything. And honestly, what that takes is money, because the kind of new idea, it's not real new, but last 10 years, is called TNR, Trap Neuter Release. And there's one person that, over the last 20 years, has probably, single-handedly, dealt with the cat problem in this town, and it's not Barbara Bonahom. You know, we all kind of focus on the dogs. You're right, because that's, in numbers at the shelter, that's higher. But numbers in the city, the feral cats are what people say, you know, I've got 15 cats behind my house, and I can't get rid of them other than doing something I don't want to do. And the city police and over John Taft have been unable to trap them. There's just not the money or the manpower to do that. And then, once you get them to neuter them, that's, you know, $100 a cat, and the city can't afford it, and the Humane Society can't afford it. And so it remains an incredible problem. And I would absolutely agree with you that this ordinance, the spay neuter part of it, affects both cats and dogs. But feral cats, I honestly don't know how to deal with it, because it takes a lot of money, a lot of effort, a lot of manpower, and this city just doesn't have that.
Yeah, I had a neighbor who trapped the cats and actually had them spayed or neutered and they're shot. Of course, now they're both deceased, so at least the cats they took care of are spayed and neutered. And then I have a lot of other neighbors that feed the feral cats.
You know, people have good intentions by doing that. I don't know if you've ever seen the little internet memes about how many, how many cats and dogs, but how many cats are produced in, say, two years with mama and papa cat? It's absolutely astounding. It's hundreds. It borders into the thousands. And, you know, unless people do take it into their own hands, either to feed them or to kill them, the problem goes unattended. But I tell you, I'm not sure that I, as a Humane Society member, I'm not sure that I'm ready to write Trap Neuter Release into the ordinance, because I don't know who has the money to do that. We... The subcommittee talked at length about enforcement as it is. You know, we can't expect John Taft to enforce this thing section by section and day by day. It's going to be, if he gets a call and he's able to go, he's going to look at it and see if he can use the ordinance to enforce it. But to write in that Trap Neuter and Release is favored by the City of Raton, you can write that, but nobody's going to be able to pay for it. And I... You know, maybe that's my next effort, Mayor, is to look around at what the other cities are size. That's how this was compiled, was looking at other cities in New Mexico and Colorado, and kind of, as you said, with the standard operating emergency procedures, Commissioner Schuster, we kind of just melded them into one working document that we thought Raton could live with. And Trap Neuter Release, I don't know how... But I'm sure you get calls on that, because this animal control and the Humane Society, especially us, and they're wild cats, you know, and many of them are diseased, and it's I will tell you, the county has it worse than you guys do, so...
We have to have it worse than we do.
That's something, I guess. Anything else, I'd be glad to...
The only other thing is, perhaps not this ordinance, but at some point, we need to address service animals. I have a friend, he no longer lives in the city, but he was declared legally blind, and he also, his stability was not very good. So he had a dog to assist him with his stability, and a horse that he could ride. He didn't drive, but he could ride the horse. And what he would do was, he would board that horse, but then, if he had a morning appointment, say, like at the VA, he'd pick the horse up, and then, if he had another appointment, he would take the horse to his house, and his neighbors all complained because he had this horse. And so something like that needs to be addressed. He was also refused, that he could not go into one of the convenience stores here in town, which I think is against federal law.
I was going to say, all of that is covered by...
Federal law.
...federal law, yeah. I mean...
The mayor of the committee did talk about that individual, and we at the city have met with that individual, and that's really an exceptional situation.
I know it is.
You know, while it's not specifically mentioned here, internally, we said...
That's not going to get charged.
...that doesn't fall in your provisions here.
Right. I mean, I think you always have to rely on the common sense and good understanding of your police department and your animal control in enforcing anything, just as they may let some speeder go by when they say, I was just taking my wife to the hospital, and, you know, the wife is ready to give birth. They're not going to ticket them. So I think those kind of things that come on a case-by-case basis should be addressed as such.
Okay.
Thank you.
I want to thank you especially for all your hard work. You know, last time you addressed us, we tasked you with putting together this group and...
Oh, no, that was the city manager. Let me tell you, Commissioner, I was the only one of the animal rights groups on the group on the committee, so you tasked, you all tasked him in getting a committee that was a little more fair and impartial than I might have been. So it was...
Well, thanks to both of you.
It was a valuable process, and, you know, I think we all went in with maybe some expectations of this, that, and the other, and conversation, you know, communications is always valuable, but we waded through a lot of information, a lot of back and forth, but it was a valuable process.
Yeah, and I know those kind of processes are hard work, and I appreciate the effort that you and the city manager...
Thank you.
And everyone else who was on that committee.
I look forward to having folks here to stand up for both sides, so that you all can make this difficult decision and hopefully see your way through to passing.
I think you worked hard at trying to make it something that will work for Raton.
Thank you.
Okay, then we'll be having a public hearing then on this?
Mayor, I believe that we need to schedule that public hearing, and I believe that the ordinance says that we would advertise that public hearing 30 days before we have that. And so I don't have that date worked out, but that would be an August meeting. And so I think the...
We're living in the second meeting in August.
Second meeting in August, and if the commission would take action to schedule that public hearing, and we have the dates, we'll have a calendar with me.
Do we need just one public hearing or two?
One is the... You can have more, and there's not, but according to the ordinance, you can have one public hearing.
August 22nd.
So we would ask the commission to schedule it for August 22nd. Now, I think, Mayor and Commissioner, one of the goals here... Now, I think, Mayor and Commission, one of the goals here is we don't want members of the public to say, I didn't know that you were taking this action. And so, we need to make every effort that we can to get notice out to the public that this commission is considering this. So, I think that we would probably talk about that in subsequent meetings prior to that scheduled public hearing. I think we put it on the agenda for the other two meetings as well and try to get word out to the public about what's in the ordinance. Ordinance will be available, it'll be available on our website for review. And we would certainly encourage anybody who's interested in this to read that and make their thoughts known. And it is a difficult decision that we're headed for here. And either way, there's a difficulty with it, we would expect that. So, I think the action would be to set up, schedule a public hearing for August 22nd.
And can we, we can then take action right after that?
You could take action. It's not mandated to do. You can schedule additional public hearings or whatever, but you could take action.
Yeah, it just depends on what the public has to say.
Sure.
Okay, we don't need to make a motion to put it on the agenda, do we?
Do we have to, we just have to approve the introduction, that's all.
We don't have to.
You need to prove that.
All right, good.
Yeah, just put it on the agenda.
Right.
Yeah, you don't have to make a motion.
Yeah, I don't think so. Deliberate an act on Task Order Number 32 from Molson Corbin and Associates, PA, for Taxiway A rehabilitation phase one. Mr. Barry.
Mayor and Commission, I will address this agenda item and H as well in a similar kind of manner. These are both task orders from our consulting engineer in regard to airport work. And they both deal with construction phase professional services. And generally, that is having a full-time inspector on the project during the construction phase. And so, both projects, and that's rehabilitation of Taxiway Alpha and construction of Taxiway Delta are advertised for bids currently. We anticipate opening bids on the Taxiway Alpha on July 20th and open bids for construction on Taxiway Delta on July 27th. We'll bring those to you for your consideration and award then at the 2nd July meeting and the 1st August meeting. By the time we go through the contract process, we could be looking to start a construction about September 1st on both projects. So, there are two separate task orders. They're funded separately. Task Order 32, and that's in regard to Taxiway Alpha, includes federal money through Federal Aviation Administration. That is the 95.5 funding formula. 90 federal, 5 state, 5 local. In regard to Taxiway Delta, I'll just save that for the next item. But we do recommend in favor of the task order for professional services that's been submitted to the commission.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second. We have a motion and a second to approve Task Order Number 32 from Molson Corbin and Associates for Taxiway A rehabilitation phase one. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Mr. Barry, on Task Order 33?
Task Order 33, the, this would be a funding formula that does not include federal money. So, state aviation is paying 90% of the cost of construction and professional services. The city of Raton would pay 10% of both. And what you have is a task order here for construction phase professional services. Again, full-time inspector at the site during construction. Now, it could be that we get the same contractor for both projects or we could have different contractors for both projects. And we'll see how that comes out shortly. But we would treat those separately under the funding formula. So, again, recommend approval of Task Order 33 for professional services during the construction phase. By the way, Mayor, we've had extensive discussions with federal aviation, state aviation, and Molson Corbin and City of Raton over the last week or two weeks actually about the process of accepting bids, awarding this, and starting construction. So, I think we're all on the same page there with those agencies.
You said this was paid by state aviation?
This is paid 90% state aviation.
And we're responsible for the 10%?
We're responsible for 10%, yes.
Whereas the other one, we're only responsible for 5%. Okay, thank you.
I'm going to approve Task Order Number 33 from Molson Corbin and Associates, PA, for Taxiway D construction.
We have a motion and a second to approve Task Order Number 33 from Molson Corbin and Associates for Taxiway D construction. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Deliberate an act on Resolution 2017-34 and MDOT Aviation Division Application for 2017-2018 Consumable Grants. Mr. Barry?
Mayor and Commission, this is an agreement that we have with state aviation annually. You can see that the estimated amount, $10,000. The city, by adoption of this resolution, certifies that it has budgeted 10% of the matching funds in the fiscal year 18 budget, which we have done. And the consumable grant is a way of paying for things like light bulbs that we might use in various places such as runway lights. So, it's things that are not capital improvements that have a relatively short life. There are a lot of those things. It could be herbicide, paper towels, it could be a number of things. We do have Dusty here is a representative of the fixed base operator. He probably give you a lot more detailed information on what all goes into the consumables. But this is something that we've done annually for a long time.
Mr. Chavez probably thought consumables were the chocolate chip cookies.
I was gonna ask him, I thought it was the pastries.
You have those, don't you?
Yeah, make a motion to approve Task Order Number 33 from Molson Corbin and Associates, PA, for Taxiway D construction.
Second.
We're the next one, Don.
Deliver and approve Resolution 2017-34 for National Aviation Division Application for 2017-18 Consumable Grant.
Next, we'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2017-34 New Mexico DOT Aviation Division Application for Consumable Grant. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Public hearing, City of Raton Infrastructure Capital Improvement Plan. Mr. Barry?
Mayor and Commission, somewhere in the vast expanse of requirements that the state of New Mexico gives to municipalities, one of those is that we adopt an infrastructure capital improvement plan. We do that annually. Our plan is due to be submitted to Department of Finance Administration around September 1st. We would anticipate adopting the ICIP here at the commission meeting, again, at that 2nd August meeting. And so, between then and now, we want to identify what the priorities of the city are. And those priorities are the staff here, department heads. I've asked department heads to review the infrastructure capital improvement plan and give me their input on that. It's the priorities of the commission. But more importantly, it's the priorities of the public. And so, we hope to, between now and the August 22nd meeting, get feedback from the general public about where the priorities ought to be for the city's capital improvement plan. Now, this is important if we go to places that we go looking for grant funding. And it's especially important in the capital outlay process during the legislative session. And they really have a requirement that a request for capital outlay be identified as one of your high priority capital improvements on your ICIP. And they will go to the ICIP and look that up. And so, it's, we have a couple of months here to identify what those priorities are, but there is definitely an importance to that. Other programs where grant funding may be available also refer to the infrastructure capital improvement. And so, we have a public hearing scheduled here tonight, but we will take input from the public through that August 22nd meeting. And then, we anticipate approval of a revised ICIP at that meeting. So, what you have in front of you, Mayor, is the priorities that were adopted by the commission last year. And I'll just go down through a couple of the top priorities. And street improvements were identified as the number one priority. And as we've said, you could throw a dart at the city map and wherever that lands, it's gonna land on a street that needs improved because generally, most all of the streets need some attention from full reconstruction to maybe some, just a maintenance issue. But we have extensive of street needs. And we've identified that in the past as a high priority. And last year, we identified that as the top priority. And capital outlay is a good source of funding for street improvements. We currently are putting a project together that we've talked about for a while. And that's resurfacing of some residential streets in the original town size and other places. And that's funded with capital outlay from two years ago. So, that has been an effective method of funding that in the past. Number two on the list, you had adopted Lake Malloy Dam Safety Improvements. And I would tell you that there's been some action on that even though there was no funding from the legislature last year on dam improvements. There was funding, capital improvement funding from a couple of years ago. And a lot of that funding has been utilized for dam safety improvements. There's a little bit of money left. And currently, the Raton Water Works has scheduled an engineering evaluation of the primary spillway. And partly, that's in response to an event that we saw in California, the Oroville Dam. You remember, there was a failure on that spillway. And you remember, there's extensive damage, not to the embankment itself, but to the spillway, the emergency spillway because of that failure. So, Raton Water Works has approved the task order to AECOM. That's their dam consultant. They will start that evaluation on July 17th. That will involve a number of methods of evaluating the spillway. But it will also involve coring of the spillway in a number of places. So, we've been going through a process of approval with state engineer, the Dam Safety Bureau. They have approved our work plan. And the dam is not currently spilling. It's a little below spillway crest. So, if it remains that way on 17th, we'll put equipment in the spillway and perform that coring. And when we talk about the primary spillway, that's the concrete chute that's on the face of the embankment. So, if you were gonna construct a dam today, especially a high hazard dam, you would probably not put that spillway chute on the embankment. That's old technology. We also have an auxiliary spillway, which is around on the left abutment of the dam. But that's what we see is that all of the discharge from the lake is over this primary spillway. So, we'll perform that evaluation and see what the engineers say about that. And one thing that we expect is the crest of the dam is the original concrete. And it's something called an OG-shaped control section. And we anticipate removal and replacement of that OG section. And that is pretty tricky work, I can tell you. So, we'll do a lot of planning and we'll have to find funding for replacement of that OG section. The Dam Safety Bureau has expressed that Lake Malloy Dam is one of their priorities statewide. So, I think they'll be very cooperative with us as far as helping us find a funding source. But definitely, that's gonna fall somewhere in our top five priorities. Whether it stays at two or we move that around, we'll determine that between then and now. But definitely, I think that's gonna be a priority. Patrol car replacement for RPD, we talked about that. Mayor and Commission, it could stay here. But I think what we would like to recommend to you is our law enforcement protection funds be used to finance the purchase of two or three new vehicles. As we reported during budget hearings, we did that previously four years ago. That financing debt is now paid off. We used a portion of our law enforcement protection funds for that. And we would propose doing that again. So, anticipate some meetings with the Mexico Finance Authority between now and the session and try to get that financing set up and bring that to the commission. So, that may change the way we look at this as a priority. It may still be good to try to request that from the legislature. But that is something we would plan on doing prior to the legislative session. We have city public works equipment purchases in there at number four. And we had put that request in to the legislature last year. Of course, no capital outlay was funded during that 2017 session. But we did anticipate a purchase of a public works loader. And so, we have two public works loaders. One of those, we have red-tagged. It's got such extensive needs that we don't use that piece of equipment anymore. And we have a second one that we share between streets and drainage purposes, solid waste, parks, whatever comes up, really in poor condition. It would take some money to make that equipment, it's usable. But it's got issues such as it probably needs a motor replaced, transmission replaced, brakes and some other components. So, it's pretty worn out. But we did receive the donation of a small loader from Raton Public Service Company. That could help us kind of get through that loader issue for about five years. So, that could potentially slip. We will talk about other equipment issues in public works. But with the donation of that loader, we're not in bad shape right now. We're relying on one piece of equipment. It has low hours on it, but I can tell you that it was from the 1980s. So, it's an old piece of equipment, not new by any means. And it was used at the plant when we handled coal. And since we don't handle coal, largely, the machine is state parked. And so, it has pretty low hours. Thanks to RPS and the board for donating that to us. It's really helping us out right now. So, we'll talk about what we do with equipment purchases. And then, at 5, we had the Raton Main Street Grate Blocks project. And I could tell you that we have 100% ready-to-go-to-construction plan specifications for the Grate Blocks project. It's estimated at a little over $1 million for construction costs. But we have the professional services there as well. So, it's gonna be over $1 million. We talked about the New Mexico Main Street funding, $320,000. The city has committed $90,000 to match. We are preparing an application to the U.S. Department of Commerce, the EDA program, for additional funding. And I don't know that that's gonna be a good project to go to the legislature with, seeing how we do have a large chunk of Main Street capital outlay. So, that's likely to get switched around as well. And that's your top five, Mayor and Commission.
Any questions from the audience? Since it is a public hearing, this is trying to go speak.
I would really encourage people, we, we hear from people throughout the year. Um, and, um, this is a good time for people to come forward. And they can write comments and send it to us in written form. You can go on the website and, and leave your comments. You can come to a meeting and, 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 but, uh, this is a good time for the public to let us know what the priorities are from their perspective.
Okay, uh, going forward, city managers. Excuse me, city managers report.
Mayor, I'm going to talk primarily about, uh, uh, construction projects that we're, uh, looking at. We are in construction season. And I, I'll tell you that, um, we have a document for the signature of the mayor tonight. And then, uh, with that document, we'll issue a notice to proceed to, uh, N K Electric for construction of the senior theater digital project. That will, that construction will, uh, uh, commence, uh, could be as soon as tomorrow. And it, we anticipate that the, upon receipt of the notice to proceed, there's going to be a time, uh, element as far as ordering some of the components. A lot of the cost is in the projector, uh, panel system, uh, components that go with the screen. And we'll find out what the delivery time on that is. But, uh, construction will start on that and, uh, I'll keep you posted. We anticipate that within ninety days, that, that project will be completed. Something that we've talked about for a number of years now, and so that will start. We have talked to, uh, our contractors in regard to the Chip Seal project. And if you remember, uh, there are three state purchasing agreements in place. Two of those are for material, uh, one is for the actual work. Uh, we've scheduled with those vendors, uh, for late July or early August. Uh, so that would be the, uh, Pecos-Mora Avenue, One of Vista Sugar Reet and, um, um, there are some other streets. We've talked about those. There's a project that we'd like to do with the gas tax money, and that's a short section of Price Street. Uh, we have a real drainage problem on Price Street. That's in the, uh, Price Street is a street that intersects with the Clayton Road. This is in our, uh, our highway servicing business district. And this little section of Price Street, uh, is not the only, uh, street that needs attention there, but it's, uh, it's such a drainage problem that, uh, um, we would like to construct that. So we would anticipate that, uh, work will commence on that under the annual street contract, um, probably next week. And that, uh, will take care of a, a short section of that, not all of Price Street. Just a short section where we have a particular drainage problem and where visitors to town , uh, really have an issue navigating that section of it to get to, to businesses. The community kitchen, um, we've made a priority out of that right now. It's, uh, in rough shape. We're doing demolition of some cabinets and countertops that are in there. We had a team meeting down there today as far as moving a new stove in, uh, moving some other components out. Uh, we had a freezer that I think originally was donated by the senior center that came out. Uh, we're moving, uh, an oven, we're moving a small, uh, uh, burner top to put in the, the new stove. Um, and that's related to the USDA grant that we had talked about. But we would anticipate that the city, uh, will fund a portion of things like some new cabinets. So I'll report back to the commission on, uh, on, uh, proposed expenses when we get to that point. So right now, it's easy phase and I'll take care of that now. Uh, I'll close, Mayor, with a note that we have a, a significant issue with bears right now. It's been very dry. Um, bears are, are trying to survive. And so we see a lot of bear activity in town. And, and what we see is that, uh, we put our bear dumpsters in those traditional areas that, that bears access pretty easily. Uh, and, and those containers, if the lid is closed, are, are effective. And so we're seeing the bears push in further into town into areas, uh, that don't have bear-proof containers and normally do not see bears. Have not, not seen bears in past years. And so they're coming on into town, they're coming into areas we haven't seen them before. Uh, we're working with game and fish, um, but, uh, bears are hungry right now. And so, uh, I, when we talk to the citizens, it may be people that normally have not seen bears at their home in the past. And, um, as, as far as some of the, the methods of control that residents in bear country have used in the past, uh, just to remind people, if you would, uh, try to know the date of the dumpster pickup and only put out trash on those dates, and especially the kind of trash that will attract bears, will kind of help that problem. But I think we also just need to be aware of the bears. Uh, so...
They said on the radio this morning, take down your hummingbird viewers at night and clean your grill.
That's right.
Those are the two I remember.
Yeah, there are a number of things. Pet food, um, you know, and, and in the past, in some years, not prevalent in Raton, but in places, um, bears going into garages, homes, businesses. So I would, uh, really have things secure where we can prevent that from happening. And, uh, as I say, we're working with game and fish, but, uh, this could go on for the next month or two months. So we would ask residents to really work with us and, and to take care of their trash. And it's, there's nothing wrong with even bringing that trash, uh, to the city hall dumpster where we have a, a bear-proof container, uh, or taking it directly to the transfer station, that, that could help out. So we would ask pe, residents and people to, to do as much as they could to help with the problem. That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay. Is there any other business to come before this party? Seeing none, meeting adjourned.